We have quite the crowd tonight, so let's get things moving. Let's please start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's order business. The motion to approve the minutes of the 124 Regular Board of Education meeting and the 131 Board of Education, Special Board of Education meeting. Motion by Ann, second by Stephanie. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carry it. Next up is the Superintendent Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dingman, and welcome everyone who's here tonight. And we have the G.W. Miller enrichment presentation afterward. But we know, and that definitely draws a crowd, and we're excited when we have our schools presented the beautiful things that are happening in the walls of our schools. But we also know that what happened a week from yesterday at Nanuet Senior High School has certainly sent shockwaves through all of our families. Everyone on the board, our administrators, teachers, parents, everyone associated with the Nanuet Schools is concerned. It's validated. Not only, we met our staff this past week, not only was this something that has shaken Nanuet, but it also has represented a reminder in the Hudson Valley. Schools, likewise, schools that have this tight-knit culture of love and success and a culture of relationship building among students and families and in the school community, where everyone in that zip code huddles around the schools, right? The Hudson Valley is known to have some of the best schools in the country because of those cultural factors. What happened here in Nanuet on Monday has shaken the Hudson Valley straight up through. I've worked with 85 superintendents in this area. I've heard from almost all of them. By midnight on Monday night, I had texts from everybody. So this is a scary thing. It's acknowledged, it's validated, and it's in all of our hearts and minds for sure. So I want to acknowledge that as the superintendent here in Nanuet, that we have the unfortunate position to shoulder this reminder of how dangerous things are in the world and that Nanuet unfortunately is the first to experience this in our area of like-minded school districts and like-minded cultures rallying around their schools. So it is a priority to reflect on what happened on Monday, and we will discuss. I'm sure the folks will have comments and questions, and, you know, we have some idea as a school community, as a board, of what some of those questions are going to be. Can anticipate those as parents for sure. But I also want to acknowledge some of my responsibilities as superintendent is to be a good communicator, right? And I think I do that well. I've had the unfortunate and fortunate early experience of being your COVID superintendent, where, you know, giving messages became sort of my every-other-day occurrence as part of my job training. This particular situation was very difficult and very different from my communication approaches during the pandemic in that this was an active investigation, still is. So being that tied to what's happening in the court system and with our local police and beyond was new to me as well with the situation, a discipline situation in our schools at this level of severity. So I know some of our community members. I was able to call people, email folks back as best I could, but I didn't communicate as much as I normally do. And it's an honest, I was limited in what I was able to share on an every-other-day basis. I was very much tied to the PIO. I didn't want to impact any of the criminal investigation or anything that's going on in the court system. And so Monday night was an update to the community. I know it took, people needed to let that marinate and ask questions. And over time, 24, 48, 72 hours, people had questions and wanted to hear from the schools. Still was not able to give information. And so Friday, our emergency response team got together, our communication team, and offered, again, not an answer to everybody's fear, not meeting everyone where they are and where they want to hear from us, but just to remind the community that safety and security is a priority, has been a priority, continues in society and in schools to be an evolving priority as we learn what works, what doesn't work. And Nanuet has always been in that space. That's why my K-12, which the board had kind of razzed me a little, was really, really long. But we felt like it was worth the extra text to be sent out because there's a lot of stuff that we are working on here in Nanuet, and we will reflect on Monday, and we will continue to evolve, right, like all organizations and all school districts. Some of the details of what went on on Monday, I will do my best to put together a timeline with specifics, and I will read that for the community who's watching. I know on YouTube tonight, as well as folks that are here. Again, I am limited in certain details and aspects of the investigation and of what went on on Monday, but I will certainly share everything that I possibly can so that folks are as informed as we are in what we know and what's appropriate at this point. So I will do that, I will do that now with a heavy heart. Sequence of events. Late in the afternoon on Monday, January 30th, 2023, at the Nanuet Senior High School. The Nanuet Senior High School administration, they were informed that a student allegedly had a gun on him during the previous week at school. The administrative team began an investigation immediately. The student was brought to the office in the high school, and a gun was secured immediately by the Clarkstown Police School Resource Officer. The investigation and interviews commenced, and it was determined that there was no immediate threat of violence in or around the school or surrounding the campus. The Clarkstown Police, in a subsequent press release, confirmed this as well. I quote, "The detective bureau is continuing to actively investigate this incident, but at this time, there have been no reports of any threats made to students or staff by this suspect." All of our emergency protocols were followed with precision. Again, there's, you know, it's hard to say there's a success here because it's such a scary incident, but I want to applaud our high school administration, Principal Mahoney and his team for how they handled this situation with precision and accuracy in how they used our training, our shell procedures, which are the shelter in place, the hold in place, the evacuation, the lockdown, the lockout. We are trained in those protocols. Those protocols are always utilized in a case-by-case basis. One of the areas that our training has us, you know, tied to the fidelity of is you have to ascertain if in that investigation at that moment there is imminent threat upon the campus, the school, in any way, shape, or form. There has to be an investigation into, is there a threat on the school in that situation? If the answer is yes, one of those five shell protocols qualifies for the situation. In this particular situation, there was no threat ascertained in the investigation in consultation with our school resource officer and our detectives, and the decision was made that a lockdown did not qualify. I know that that's a question from families, from staff, because where you want to be is do everything you can to make sure my children, every child, every staff member, anybody that's in that area is 100% safe. And in that particular situation, some of the details of the way things rolled out, if we did go into a lockdown, it actually would have been more unsafe in the situation, okay? And that's, that's the most that I can share in terms of that. But I want to applaud Principal Mahoney and his team, and I want to thank once again the Clarkstown Police. And thankfully, Nanuet has had a longstanding partnership with the SRO program in that we have an SRO that works in our high school and serves our middle school as well. That was instrumental in making that investigation and also getting the weapon, you know, the best that it possibly could in record time. Rockland student was charged soon after. Criminal possession of weapon two felony, criminal possession of a weapon on school grounds felony two. The community has also been asking, and again, I understand why. I'm a dad, I have an elementary, a middle, and a high school student. A few miles down the road, I have a freshman in high school. I understand. I am also a member of the school community. I work for a school district. I do work for the state government of New York State, and I am prohibited by law to share information about any child, any family related to discipline. Small or large, stealing apple, apple from the cafeteria, I can't share with you the repercussions or any of the details of what happened in the code of conduct. Something so large as what happened on Monday, I can't as well. And I know that that leaves your pain and your curiosity in a weird spot. What I can do is I can share information that is out in the public that may speak to some of that fear. The Rockland County District Attorney, Thomas E. Walsh II, announced last evening, February 6th, 2023, the second term of the grand jury of Rockland County indicted a 15-year-old male juvenile offender for criminal possession of a weapon in the second degree and criminal possession of a weapon inside of the Nanuet High School on January 30th, 2023. Again, I am proud of our administrative team. The situation was carried out with precision, but I'm acknowledging that because we were able to mitigate, no one was hurt, thank God, no one was hurt. And I understand the fear of what if, what if this happened? And the what ifs are what keeps me up at night as well. But the reality of what happened is that no one was hurt. No one was hurt. This was a successful use of why we drill and take this work seriously here in Nanuet and across the Hudson Valley, but it worked for us here in Nanuet. So again, I am thankful to our high school administrative team, our Clarkstown Police Force for their partnership. We are, we have been talking, of course, as a board of some options, and, you know, we will comment tonight on advisory committees, exploration committees, to look into what other evolutions are out there to make schools safer, right? We're always looking at the trade-off in schools. It's a little bit easier in the adult organization worlds to build security things because adults aren't children, right? We're developing the minds of kindergarteners, pre-Ks, up to 18-year-olds. And so there's a trade-off to the way schools explore how we keep our children safe physically and also mentally, socially, emotionally, right? That's a major part of our mission as schools. So it makes this space tricky, and we want to respect both sides of our mission. Physical safety of our kiddos, mental health and wellness of our kiddos, right? And so that they continue to love their schools for the community aspect of it. Someone brought something scary into Nanuet that we've never seen before. We have a culture of kindness and community, and that's why we're such a strong school. That's why we're so well-known. That's why you moved here, that's why you live here and raise your kids here. Before we get into questions about evolutions and next steps, I just want to say, we don't want to let that decision to bring in something violent and something that's not customary to our culture as a school community bleed all of the good stuff out of our school. Make us move the good out of our school quickly because then that fear and that violence, it takes away the characteristics of Nanuet that makes Nanuet what Nanuet is. So it's a real tender timeline, and I think I'm asking that we respect that timeline and we reflect on the beauty of Nanuet and of the things that we do really well in terms of prevention through relationship building, relationship building, relationship building. But I do understand we are in a new world, we are in a scary world, and there are new technologies that are out there for schools, and this is certainly a board of education that is open to exploring those spaces. With a heavy heart, that's, that's all I have to say, Mr. Dingman.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Board of Education. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Ed Dingman. I am the Board President. Thank you, Kevin, Dr. McHale, for those words. I'm not even sure where to start, honestly. I'm a retired detective from New York City, and I was shocked to the core when I heard what happened last, last Monday. It's hit our community, and it's really scary, it really is. And just, just know that, you know, we're members of the community also. Three, four more members, I think, still have children in the district. So we have a vested interest in this. My son is just graduating, sorry.
Grandmas.
Grandmas.
You forgot the grandma.
Okay, sorry. We, we take this so seriously, but we were, we had to be careful what we said last week. It was an active investigation. We're dealing with a minor, we're dealing with a student. We have laws we have to follow. Communication may have seemed slow, but we had, we had to. We could not come out, say something accidentally. It hindered the investigation. That was the most important part, and which is still ongoing. And also I'd say we are working very closely with the administration. And one of the things Dr. McHale said that we would like to form, we're discussing forming an advisory committee, not just of board members and staff and administration, but also of stakeholders to exploit this because none of us are security experts, and this is all due to us. Again, it's so scary that we have to be here now, but unfortunately, am I going to bang this? Unfortunately, we are, we are here, and we have crossed that bridge. So we hear you, we really hear you. I don't know if you can see, I'm actually shaken up that I have to speak these words tonight. But we're there, and we are going to do as much as we can. We're going to support the district as much as we can from the Board of Education standpoint to do what we can to protect the students, the district, the community. That's all I have to say. Let's get to our public forum. Okay. Okay, so now we are up to the first public forum. I first must read a statement. Public forum is an opportunity for the public to make statements to the Board of Education. Statements are not made to other members of the public. The Board does not routinely comment on personnel issues in public. It is the Board's strong recommendation that any criticism or compliments concerning personnel be made in writing and not presented in open forum. Comments made in writing allow the Board to review the comments in detail and ask the superintendent to review the comments and take action if necessary. So just, just to let you know that, please, this is your time to say your piece, whatever you need to, but it's not going to be a constant back-and-forth answering questions. We will take everything into account, and, you know, we definitely hear you. Anyone? Oh, yeah.
Good evening.
Could you, whoever comes up, could you just please take your names?
My name is Harold Straw.
I am chairman of Nanuet Fire District.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the members of Nanuet Fire District Company. The Nanuet Fire District, I'm sure I've emailed all the board members, I'm sure you're all aware. New York State has recently passed the 10% property assessment reduction for first responders, and that all the taxing entities need to pass the resolution allowing that. With that being said, I haven't seen on the agenda yet for Nanuet to have that happen. Nanuet Fire District is unique. We cover two school districts, Nanuet and Clarkstown Central School Districts. Clarkstown has already passed a resolution with five years and 10% as the maximum that's allowed by the law, and we're asking Nanuet to move on this as quickly as possible. We know the March deadline for 2023, 2024 tax season has to be before March 1st, and it would be a great benefit for our members. Approximately 30 to 35 members would be eligible for it that live within the Nanuet School District. The other half, or 30%, 30 members live in the Clarkstown Central School District, and some live in Perover, it's Perover School District, but they wouldn't be eligible. But I urge the Board to please consider doing whatever you can to get this passed for us in the ambulance corps before the March 1st deadline. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just, just know that we are well aware of the deadline, and we have, we are having discussions about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else for?
Somebody's coming.
Even though I know you.
So I'm Carla Barrows. First, I just want to say, like Ed, we're all shocked and surprised and disappointed about what happened. And it's scary. I know you guys know that. I want you to know, I appreciate what was done to protect the safety of our kids, but I think, you know, I hate to speak for everybody, but I think the only, you know, thing that's going to make us calmer is to have like some sort of, you know, like metal protection inserted in the schools. It's pretty obvious that that's probably the only thing that's going to like make us as parents and members of the community feel safe for our children. I want to say as somebody who's not from here originally, but raised my babies here, it was disappointing thinking it was a student that I may have, you know, in my daughter's grade, who may have done something like this. And then when I found out it was somebody, you know, not here for a while, made me a little feel, feel a little bit better, but not really because it's still scary. And I know you guys have the best intentions for our, our kids. So if, you know, we can figure out how to make them safe, I'd appreciate it. So thanks for doing the hard work.
Anybody else? There is a, there is also a second public forum at the end.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Nando, I'm here. So I do want to echo and thank you, Dr. McHale, for reminding us that this is, that it doesn't define us. It's really unfortunate, but there are so many great things happening in the Nanuet School District that we have to keep those things at the forefront. As a fellow educator, I want to say that no one ever wants to have this type of wake-up call. However, if it was at the, if we were spared lives, thankfully, lives were not lost. This could have been much worse. So definitely, when you never want it to happen in your backyard, if it had to happen, at least it was not catastrophic by any means, right? I would say particularly, again, since it's very confidential, but it is out there that the young person was relatively new to our school district, like maybe to heighten awareness of scholars that might be making comments, particularly those that we haven't grown ourselves, for lack of a better term, so like heighten awareness of what comments are being made, you know, certainly looking into the history of scholars that come to us, right? Just trying to understand how they come to us academically, socially, emotionally. You know, that might be something to really think about. But again, you know, as sorry as I am that this happened, I still am very proud to be a member of this school district. I still am very proud to be a member of this school district and this community. And I know that just like with any tragedy that occurs among wonderful people, we will come out of this stronger than ever. So good luck. And I am here alongside you to partner in this work.
Is there anybody else? Okay, next up on his consent agenda. Do you have anybody with any questions? Like any ideas? Paul?
I have a question.
Yes, Ann.
I noticed in there, this is probably a Maria question. We've been having a great deal of problems getting our adult education program up and running. We just had a resignation of the person who was part of Adult Ed, so...
As you know, we had Pamela Rose ran it for fifteen, probably fifteen years. And she retired during COVID. We've had two people in on a part-time basis, Pam was during part-time as well. But she brought the experience and the knowledge. It's become very hard for some of them, for the two people to start it up as a part-time basis. I think we've got to look outside the box and figure out a different system to, for someone to run it.
So you think by September, we'll have it up and running as a program?
I would hope.
So we haven't had Adult Ed this year?
Never had it since before COVID.
It was scheduled for spring.
Oh, okay. Okay. I have a very important question. What is the Spring Musical?
Cinderella.
Cinderella. Cinderella. Get my glass slippers.
Anybody else?
I'd like to fold a honor report.
Okay, if there's no other questions, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
By Sue, second by Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Next up is certified personnel.
Resolved that the following individual be approved as a substitute teacher effective 2/8/23, Roshan Ross.
Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Moved by Stephanie, second by Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Resolved that the resignation of Kira Fitzpatrick, teaching assistant in the Nanuet School District, accepted effective 2/10/23.
Can I have a motion to accept the resignation? Moved by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Sue. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carry. Thank you. Next up is the authorization of lease funds.
The treasurer's here probably authorized to transfer $2,688.10 from the Tax Sursory Reserve Fund to the General Fund to reimburse payments in pursuit of tax sorcery judgments as of January 31st, 2023.
Can I have a motion to accept? By Ann.
Second.
Second by Stephanie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry. Next up is tax sorcery.
Whereas Home Depot has filed for taxes, for reductions in taxes for the 2015 through 2022 school tax years, and whereas a potential exposure for these years is $2,757,840,000, and whereas a tentative settlement has been reached in the matter based on a recent sale, which will require a refund of approximately $39,412,000, now therefore hereby, now therefore hereby resolve that. Settlement is hereby approved. Two, the school district attorney's hereby authorized to sign this stipulation of settlement. And three, the treasurer's hereby authorized to make payment of approximately $39,412,000 from the Tax Sursory Reserve Fund.
Is that from Home Depot corporate, or is this the, was it built in the old?
It's the Home Depot on 59 that's attached to Rainwater Flanagan, which if you remember, used to be a Home Depot Expo back in the day. So they brought these for quite some time. We're trying to clear up a lot now that it's kind of back in after COVID. So this is one that's been cleared up.
So they sold?
They sold it around five years ago internally, and they've been maintaining it, but...
The whole building?
Yeah, but two separate lines. But they sold them both together. Probably internally today. But it yielded a very, it indicated a profit, I'm sorry, it indicated a value higher than they were asking for. So we're able to settle it.
So this is a good deal?
It's a very good deal.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept?
I don't know.
Moved by Sue.
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Next up is the network printing services.
This is our network and printing services. It's up every five years, and we do it through Southern Westchester through the RIC so that we get paid on it. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the district agrees to a multi-year contract with Southern Westchester BOCES for the provision of said services to the district at cost not to exceed over the term of the agreement, $574,992.60 plus yearly RIC support during the term of this contract. The amount may be amended with the approval of both parties. Payments will be made as part of the regular annual BOCES contract for services. The superintendent of schools or designated is hereby approved, authorized to approve the final terms of the contract and to execute. On behalf of the district, all documents necessary or appropriate to carry out the intent of this resolution.
Can I have a motion to accept? Moved by Christine, second by Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry. Next up is the presentation of Miller Goals and Priorities 22/23 update.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
All righty then. Done?
Was it something you said?
Okay, we can go to the next slide. Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh, I won't shout then. Okay, go to the next slide. So thank you very much for having us. As always, we are very grateful for the continuous support of the Board of Ed, everybody in central administration, as well as our ongoing relationship with Roseanne and the Family Resource Center. Tonight, you'll hear about George W. Miller Elementary through the lens of how we address our district goals and priorities that you see up here. These goals address academics, so are we seek to create a rigorous and relevant learning environment for our students and our teachers. Our second goal is a social-emotional development, deepening our students' understanding and use of our current SEL programs, as well as community engagement. And tonight, you'll hear about a new initiative as well as student voice.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Martell Mayew. I am the new assistant principal of Miller and Highview. I want to start out by thanking the board members and our central administration for the opportunity to present tonight. I would also like to thank our parents for entrusting their children to our care. On behalf of the entire Miller family, we are honored to educate your children. Your children are our first priority, their safety, their development, and their happiness. So this year, Dr. McHale and Dr. Fox brought in Carol Conklin Spillane, a leadership coach to support us in our work. And in her first meeting, she shared the importance of encouraging change and bringing stability. To us, that means continuous learning, taking risks, and creating a safe environment. And tonight, we are going to take you on a journey of what that looks like through the goals and priorities of our district. Mariellen and I would like you to know that this is not something that we can do alone. It takes a team effort. So tonight, we brought a few members of our team. First, our instructional facilitators, who truly embody the statement of encouraging change and bringing stability. Ms. Defoe and Ms. Kalar will be sharing on the literacy updates and some important data points. We also have our fabulous kindergarten team leader and teacher, Ms. Delanovic, who will be sharing how the kindergarten team is raising rigor by revising one of their units and to support students. And with that being said, I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Griffin as she leads us in a mindful breathing exercise.
Great. I'm gonna, I'll stand closer here, because holding this is annoying. Okay, so we're going to start the evening. We'll begin our journey with a mindful minute. So I invite you all to find a comfortable seat with both feet on the ground if you can. You can hold your hands on your lap in a seat or on your thighs. Gently close your eyes or find a downward gaze. Sit tall, elongating your spine. Relax your jaw and let your tongue fall softly to the floor of your mouth. Roll your shoulders up to your ears, push them backwards, and let them fall down your spine. Let go of any thoughts that pop into your head. Bring your attention to your breath, and just notice how it feels right now before we alter it. Is it shallow? Are you breathing through your mouth or your nose? Don't judge it, just notice it. We'll do some deep breathing to the count of three. First, take an inhale and exhale completely. Place one hand on your belly and one hand on your heart. Inhale deeply, filling your belly, your ribs, and your chest. Hold. Exhale. Two, three. Inhale. Two, three. Hold. Exhale. Two, three. As you let your breath find its natural rhythm, I pose four statements that spell the word glad. G. Think of one thing or person you were grateful for today. L. Think of one thing you learned today. A. Think of one thing you accomplished or achieved today. And D. Think of one thing that delighted you today. Slowly open your eyes.
Okay, so this year, in our ICLE training, we learned so much about our students in our classroom, also known as the generation alpha. Born between the years of 2010 to 2025, they are the first generation of students to be born completely in the 21st century. Their life experiences are drastically different from ours. For one, they experienced the pandemic as children. They're tech savvy, but they also have this strong digital presence. They grew up with iPad and smartphones in their hands. And because of that, they will grow up learning more and deeper about the world than any of their predecessors. So what does this mean for us as educators? It's important for us as educators to understand their needs and their expectations so that we can create the best educational experience for them. Learning for them must support their natural drive of innovation, creativity, entrepreneurship, and knowledge sharing. Learning for them must be, we must use tool, digital tools to support them. And learning for them must be meaningful and relevant. Thank you.
So as we started our work with ICLE, which for parents who are here or listening, ICLE stands for the International Center of Leadership with Education, and we have to thank the board and Dr. McHale and Dr. Fox for really partnering with this company for our personal and professional development. The golden circle here is the work of Simon Sinek. And he tells us that when you start with your why, then your what and your how is more impactful because you're walking in towards your purpose. So our teachers are really passionate about their why. They know why they come to work every day, and it's to create an incredible learning environment for our students that's nurturing and curious, and creates curiosity. Having a better understanding now of Gen Alpha, of their style of learning and interacting, our what and our how are becoming clearer for us. So as we, I want to share with you a little bit about how that ICL rollout is looking at Miller for both our teachers and our students. Our discussions and our trainings with ICLE has really guided us in how are we bringing our faculty meetings and our superintendent conference days. So we've modeled for our teachers the instructional practices that we want them to further develop in the classroom. In our meetings, we've had jigsaw activities, turn and talk activities, really rich collegial discussions. We've taken this rubric, which is separated into three different areas, and watched instructional videos using it to rate those videos. It's been really interesting to see how difficult it is for teachers to rate each other. Really hard. During our November faculty meeting, we separated the faculty into six groups, five or six. And they were tasked with creating a team name, watching three instructional videos, rating them using the rubric, and then coming up with an overall rating. One of the videos was a 10th grade biology teacher. The students were learning about worms. They were, they were, students in the video were asked to create a worm using clay. This teacher was super engaging. She had high energy. She, she had a great rapport with the students. The students were laughing, asking questions. There was a lot going on in the video. So everyone does their ratings. We reconvene as a faculty to compare our ratings. Five of the groups gave that teacher a one. One group gave the teacher a four. So you can imagine there's no inter-rater reliability there. So that resulted, though, in great discussion as to why. What did you use? What was seen in the rubric? And how did we learn the rubric by doing this? And why did we give her those scores? Was it based in the rubric, or was it based in a, oh, that feels good, and I liked her, so I'm going to give her that score? So those exercises really help us dive into this to see what our students should be doing to elevate our rigor. Then debriefing at the team meetings, I have to say, has actually been so much fun because there's so much energy and enthusiasm and positivity in the possibility of what tweaks we're making. Our next step then was to look at our internal lessons. Using one section of the rubric, we started with the higher level questioning. How are we going to enhance our lessons to increase the rigor? And our teams went, went away. They chose an upcoming lesson. They came back with the tweaks and have presented it to the class. And then, as I said, when we debriefed at team meetings, it was really fun to see what the outcome of that tweak was, or those tweaks were. This is a visual guide that was handed to all teachers so that way they keep this work really at the forefront of all the planning that we're doing in our lessons and, and looking at it. So in the bottom, you have the Blues Taxonomy, which talks about higher level questions and what types of questions are we asking, what are our students answering, what are they doing in the classroom? So it's not just questioning its activities as well. The ICLE rigor and relevance framework is on the left-hand corner, and then the four questions that go along with helping guide our planning. So that's one of the resources that the teachers are looking at.
So now we would like to model one of our activities with you all so you can experience what our teachers and our students are experiencing. So we would like to engage you in a turn and talk. The first part is for you to identify an elbow partner. You will be discussing this question with your elbow partner. I see you all looking at me like... So the question is, would you rather have a bear under your porch or a raccoon in your attic? So you can think about it, and you can just pair up, and we can have the audience pair up as well. Pair up. Would you rather have a bear under your porch or a raccoon in your attic? We'd like you to wrap up your conversations in five, four, three, two, and one. Thank you. Please hold those thoughts. We're also going to play a video for you at this time.
In Connecticut, found quite the surprise under your deck. There, a hibernating black bear. The family from Plainville says they were playing with their dog in the backyard last month when the dog started growling and acting strange. And that's when they spotted the bear and took this video. They named the bear Marty Bernard. He's got an Instagram account that, as you can imagine, has completely taken over the internet. The family did alert the Department of Energy Environmental Protection. They provided some wise counsel. Leave Marty alone. They said they could remove him from under the deck, but they could not promise that he wouldn't return.
All right, so out of that, as Ms. Griffin stated earlier, we've been focusing on high-level questioning. Our teachers have been using high-level questioning to raise the rigor for our students. And one of the things you may have noticed during the turn and talk is that everyone, most or all of you, were able to explain or justify your thinking or even just give a response. And part of that is because rigor doesn't just happen within the content. It can happen outside the classroom, similarly to what we just did. All students are able to, to be exposed to high-level questioning even if they are not aware of that content-specific subject. So the Bloom's taxonomy is a very important tool that our teachers have been using to just move our students to higher-order thinking skills. And with the Bloom's taxonomy, you can see the lower level of the triangle is the remember, all the way up to the higher level of thinking skills, which is to create. None of these levels are wrong. We, in a class, in a lesson, you will see teachers asking questions that ask them to, ask students to recall or remember as well as create. What we would like to see more of is our students exposed to higher-level questioning, such as the analyze, the evaluate, and the create. And now our kindergarten teacher is going to share how this is being done in kindergarten classes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jenny Jovanovic, teach kindergarten in, at Miller. And I've been doing so for a long time. And for as long as I've been there, we've always done a unit on hibernation, the last 20 years or so. And that unit on hibernation kind of consisted of read-alouts, both fiction and nonfiction, both discussions about the books, whole group follow-ups. There was a writing piece at the, at the end of the six to eight days we spent on hibernation. And the culminating activity was all kids brought in stuffed animal and they hibernated them in a class-made cave that was made out of a garbage bag and a cardboard box. And then they hibernated in our class all winter long. Based on our work with ICLE, we tweaked the unit amping the, amping up the rigor and the student engagement. We did the following by increasing student voice and parent involvement and really gave the kids a sense of ownership and excitement and, I mean, overall, just an amazing product. They were really excited and happy about it. We did this by, you know, this, our unit consisted of kids brainstorming. We brainstormed animals that hibernated and we created a choice board of hibernating animals. Once we created a choice board, they got to browse on a PebbleGo, which is an online application that kids are able to use in school that has nonfiction articles about everything from science, animals, and social studies. And it reads the articles aloud. So we browsed on PebbleGo until they found an animal that they were interested in, brought home the choice board to their families, and chose an animal of their own that they were interested in. Once they chose an animal they were interested in, they came back to school with their choice. And we led the kids in conducting their own research. We formed small groups. Each kid was in a group based on their animal choice. They sat on the rug, they sat around round tables, and they explored PebbleGo and listened to the articles about their animals. They were, they were amazed by it. They wanted to research more animals. They wanted to research their friend's animal. They were really excited about this. When we were done doing the research, we created anchor charts about the animal, stating all the facts and things that we learned. And they used those anchor charts to create a diagram and a writing piece about what their animals can do, what their animals look like. That's a picture of what it was before, what animals can do, what they are, and what they look like. After we did the writing piece, parents got involved and did an incredible job creating dioramas with their children, creating a habitat to which the animal hibernates. And nobody did a bear hibernating under a deck. For next year, not just dens under a deck. So they created dioramas and they were super excited to bring them in. They started coming in slowly and they were all in by Monday, the last week of our unit. And once the dioramas were in, we, we taught the children how to do an oral presentation, how to stand up using their writing piece and present to their class facts about their animals. And there were some Q and A. Kids would ask questions and they would answer the questions with the best, the best of their knowledge about their animal. And then the culminating activity at the end was a museum walk-through where the kids brought their dioramas to the cafeteria, lined them up on cafeteria tables, and we invited first and second grade classes to come and give feedback. We created these little tickets that said, "Great job, amazing work, I love your diorama, they look like that." And they would slip them into paper bags that the kids had in front of the diorama. And there were teachers walking around too that were asking questions. You know, the kids were more complimenting them and kind of amazed at the dioramas and saying, "Good job, great work, I love it." And then teachers were asking questions as well. And the kids got to answer. And they really knew a lot of stuff about their animals.
It was really impressive, you know, sitting down with the students and asking them questions about their animals and the details that they could give you. Really, really impressive.
It was incredible. And at the end, there was a reflection sheet where students completed a reflection writing piece of which animal they enjoyed learning most about. Not just their animal, any animal from the whole experience, seeing all the dioramas and hearing about all the different animals from their peers. Moving forward to next year, we would probably like to include a performance assessment rubric. We have something created from a PBL unit we did last year. And that would give the kids more information about what a good oral presentation looks like, how you should stand, the quality of your voice, and, you know, help them to understand what an oral presentation looks like and how they could, you know, be better and get and grow. And then also maybe ask older, maybe second graders or maybe even third or fourth graders from high view to come and visit the museum walk-through with prepared questions, higher-level questioning, and practice answering those questions. So overall, it was a great unit and we really got to understand the importance of this work with ICLE.
Thank you, Jenny. That's really fabulous. We're going to turn it over now to Jenny Fale for our literacy updates.
It's really hard to follow the hibernation.
So as you can see on tonight's journey, we are to literacy updates, and that's my piece. So if Mrs. Griffin would click on the word literacy update, we'll start with what I'm going to talk about tonight. So just briefly, let me explain that tonight's literacy update includes a short review of how we're incorporating the current research on the science of reading into our ELA curriculum. And I will also share the most recent Ames Web Plus data from our winter benchmarks in early literacy and reading in grades K-1 and 2, as well as give you a brief overview of the key improvements of the DRA3, which we just rolled out this year. And then we'll finish by taking a little gallery walk through student writing across the deck with my colleague, Mindy. So first, the science of reading. You see that graphic, and that's Scarborough's Reading Rope. It's a popular way to depict the multifaceted skill set that is needed to become a reader. Our instruction is informed by research and is different for each of the two main strands, the language comprehension and the word recognition. This year, we've added more opportunities to build language comprehension through the purchase of new texts for interactive learning lab and to build thematic text sets. Through the purchase of these new texts, both fiction and nonfiction, we bring the outside world into the hands of our students and allow them to see themselves on the pages. To strengthen word recognition skills, we're adding more decodable texts to give students the opportunity to apply what they have taught in foundations and using a new kinetic-based approach to teaching the trick words, which is known as heart words. When students have a strong foundation in both language comprehension and word recognition, they are better able to achieve whatever they set their mind to accomplish. And moving on to the next slide, we see our famous tier transition triangles. We have just completed, as I said, the Ames Web Plus Winter Benchmark Assessments, and we will show you the fall to winter tier transition reports for reading and for math. So in K-1, you see the numbers there on the top. The Ames Web Plus Reading Test is known as the Early Literacy Battery. In grade 2, students start taking the reading batteries that continues through grade 6. The tier transition report is a comparative snapshot that tracks student progress across the fall, winter, and spring seasons. The three risk categories, green means low risk, yellow is some risk, and red is high risk, they reference the end-of-year performance targets. Students are placed into the three tiers based on their benchmark performance and national norms. This winter, we were pleased to see a decrease in the percentage of students in the high-risk category and an increase in the percentage of students in the low-risk category. And that's evidenced by the triangles, how the red is shrinking and the green is growing. And that's all very positive. And we look forward to using this data to compare fall to spring and winter to spring to see continued growth. That was literacy.
While we're talking about Ames Web data, this, this is the math data. And you could also see that there's kindergarten, first, and second grade. And the positive thing is that all of the numbers of students are shifting to that tier one. And it's very exciting. You could see an increase in that group, a decrease in the high-risk group. And within that green, there are so many different variations and levels of students that at this point, teachers have been using this tool for several years and they've become very comfortable with actually just looking in that group and just pulling out the variations, having those small little subgroups inform their instruction. And I think teachers are very comfortable with that. It's all positive. Looks great. So nice to see the green.
Red is an accent color. So on to the DRA3 key improvements. Just each of those bullets is one of the improvements that we look forward to using this year. So last spring, two teachers in K-5 piloted the new version of the developmental reading assessment, which is known as the DRA3. In January, all teachers learned how to use this new and improved tool, and we are in the process of completing our winter benchmark period. The expanded and updated books is a win because the kids were much more engaged in the stories that they're reading. The streamlined teacher observation form helps teachers get in and out of an assessment more quickly. So does the digital scoring and the record-keeping. The improved data analysis and reporting, really, you'll see a little bit of that in the next slide. It's all redesigned to maximize instructional time. So if you would go to the next slide, there's three little snapshots just to represent what we have here. So on the upper left corner, that's what a teacher sees now. Instead of a stack of folders, their class is laid out in front of them. And from that class homepage, they can immediately start an assessment. They can see where the percentage of students in their class are falling, whether they are green again at the benchmark or red below the benchmark. So it's really, it's really a very helpful tool. And then on the bottom, you see the skill summary. So instead of having to paper and pencil do the analysis, the program does it for you. It lists the skills across the bottom. Underneath those skills would be student names and the levels that they were able to be successful at. And then the top right corner is the focus for instruction. And based on how the teachers score, they're directed direct into instructional moves that they could then apply in small groups. So it's really just a beautiful system. And we're really, so far, the feedback is, is very positive about it. So now the best part of my part of this presentation is we're going to take another gallery walk. The left-hand graphic is simply the writing rope, and it's very tiny, but it really just represents all the sub-skills that have to do with becoming a skilled writer. And so I think as we click on the gallery walk and go through some student work, you'll be impressed with how well our students are writing.
This is some science writing. So this is a method that we use in our Science 21 program in second grade, claim, evidence, reasoning. So students have to state a claim, support it with evidence, give reasons why they thought. So in this particular one, students were looking, comparing items and looking to see whether they, for example, the ice cube, after the ice cube melts, could it go back to its original state? An egg, after you crack an egg, could it go back to, you know, once it's liquid, it's solid, so just going back and forth. So this is an example of that. This is some kindergarten science writing. So our K students love visiting the OEC. So this is just a little reflection about going to that state.
So here's a little SEL. I mean, you really see how writing represents really all of our goals tonight. And this child wrote, I can write about, well, read, "I can write about my feelings," and then wrote on the bottom, "I feel calm when I take a breath," just like Mrs. Griffin taught us at the beginning of this presentation.
That's carryover.
Here's an example of what you can, how you demonstrate grit. And then if you keep going. This is a first-grade social studies unit. What do families do to support each other? And this was really sweet. "I help my mom do the wash, and we wish my children were so wonderful." And there are some other examples. And of course, you can see capitalization, punctuation, you know, spelling. There's a lot of skills involved there. When they go beyond their writing level, our teachers are there to support them by giving them the actual words. So this is what does it mean to be kind, again, some more of our SEL work. Helping friends, helping teachers, helping someone who's hurt. And they come up with a lot of different ideas that they share with one another. And moving into social studies, this is first grade, and they add a building to their town. So I was very happy to see the library. It was an important choice, as was the car wash. We finish up with the mall. These are the most important things that we have in our community, in our family. So this is second grade, and they do, you can see, obviously, the writing gets longer and looks more academic. This was urban, suburban, and rural, and you chose which one you would want to live in and then say why, give reasons for your choice. So I won't read these to you, so I can do that. Strong ideas for what they want.
There's one for each type of community.
So that concludes our gallery walk. And we're going to go take the car back to our roadmap and do some math now.
Next up in the journey is Mrs. Mindy Glor with our math updates. So part of our math updates are number talks. So last school year, as you know, Miller teachers participated in professional development in number talks. We learned about the instructional strategies and spent time observing our colleagues give number talks in their class. And we spent time exploring and trying number talks and to raise our understanding and comfort level. This year is more of a full implementation. Number talks moved into that implementation phase. And these discussions are taking place two to three times weekly in the K-2 classrooms at Miller. Teachers are using dot cards, ten frames, rec and racks, and equations to elicit student thinking. And number talks relate naturally to our work that we're doing with ICLE in our building because number talks fall very high on the rigor rubric in these ways. So the lessons are designed to inspire students to engage in academic dialogue about mathematical strategies. It's not just about an answer. It's having, empowering the students and encouraging them to explain their thinking. Not only is it important for the student to articulate and explain their thinking, it's very important for their peers to hear them explain their thinking. Sometimes students don't have the words to really explain, but when they hear their peers doing it, it encourages them and it gives them ideas to, to really try. So another way is that students drive the discussion and we encourage the respect of other people's opinions and thoughts. And as a result of the brevity of a number talk, because it really shouldn't be more than five to eight minutes, students are able to stay focused and engage in the lesson from beginning to end. So that work has been really exciting. Another part of our math updates are math workshops. So we, we moved so far away from So we moved so far away from small group because of COVID and the way we had to teach. So now we are coming back together to our old best practice ways. And last school year, Miller teachers met to discuss how we could take apart and look at our Envisions math program and try to incorporate more small group and math workshop style into the program. There were teachers that worked over the summer to incorporate math games and math stations into the curriculum, and those teachers shared with their teams. So that students could work in small groups, teachers could work in small groups with students. And we see some more of that rather than just whole group lessons. This year, a handful of teachers at Miller had the opportunity to participate in professional development. So a woman named Dr. Nikki Newton, who is the guru of math workshop, came to Bosie's. And I got her there. I have to say, I called her office, I asked if she was available, I pulled Valerie Bosie's, put it together, and we like fangirled over her, really, because she was, she's such a guru. I think she's written close to 20 books on the topic of math workshop. And we were able to send several teachers, I see Mrs. Lark in there. And teachers shared things that they learned with their team. And every teacher, classroom teacher was given a copy of one of her books. So I have been using that book to kind of frame this kind of exploring year, getting back into the math workshop. So also, a plethora of math games have been linked, that are linked to grade level standard, have been given to classroom teachers and dispersed in the classroom. And kids just think that they're playing, but we know that the students are reviewing, enriching, and just extending their learning with these math games. We were able to get some more math games, thanks to the generosity of the Nannuette School District. This, these are things that we just actually got for the classrooms, just dice and ten frames and cloths and counters and all sorts of things for the classroom that encouraged small group learning in math workshop. So balancing the entire math curriculum, number talks, and learning how to implement the math workshop can be very challenging. I spent some time creating for each grade a calendar, a pacing calendar that not only paced us with our Envisions math program, but paced us with our number talk curriculum, incorporated that, and also the different chapters in Dr. Nikki's book. So it would be easy for the teacher kind of just to follow monthly. These are the standards that we're teaching in Envisions with our math program. This is what we're doing in number talks, and this is where we're going with math stations. And I also added some links for different things, just to make it very easy and accessible to teachers.
Thank you, Mindy. Our journey is almost done. Okay, so with regards to increasing student voice and community engagement. So Taco Tuesday is back. And let me tell you how this happened. It was very exciting. So every spring, I get a plethora of letters from our students because they're learning persuasive writing or opinions. So every year, it's, we need extra recess, Mrs. Griffin, we need, you know. And this particular group of letters came, and they wanted Taco Tuesday back. So I wasn't really aware that it was gone, but it was gone. Students really wanted it back. So I must have had seven, no, 17 maybe, or 20 letters about Taco Tuesday. So I gave them to Mrs. Gregor, who's our director of food services. And don't you know, indeed, Taco Tuesday came back. So this was last spring, after we had presented to you all in the winter. And Mr. Lutz and I went around to each class, really having a conversation with the first and second graders, talking about, you did this, this was your voice, and you can make change, even though you're only six and seven years old. So that was one example of their voice being recognized. And what's up next is thank you again to the board and Dr. McKay Hill for our upper playgrounds. All the playgrounds at Miller, as you know, are going to be redone at some point this spring. The upper playground will also be done. So those plans came in later. So we're planning on having the first and second graders, because those are the ones who use the upper playground, really, we might include K, we're still kind of working on this, choose what colors the playground will be and what slides will be on it. So they'll use a Google form, and then, you know, we'll show them the results and see what happens. So we're still in the process of setting that up. Hopefully, that'll be mid-March, towards the end of March. So just a couple of examples of how we're including our students in some decision making. They are gen alphas. And how later engagement everything.
Okay, so we are so excited about this literacy and community initiative titled United by Reading. So our entire school community, our students, our teachers, are reading the book, The Big Umbrella by Amy June Bates. And we've even extended it to families. Roseanne Mercado, who is the director of Family Resource Center, has purchased the book for every student. So every student has a copy of this book and the classroom teacher. The committee created this family engagement calendar with a variety of activities that students can do with their families at home to extend the experience. There are activities such as this umbrella scavenger hunt, where we're also partnering with our community and local businesses. We have umbrellas that are displayed in seven businesses around Nannuette. And Ms. Vaughan and Wright, our Miller secretary, created these, the clues to go with each of the businesses. And students have to, students and their families, they have to go around Nannuette in search of an umbrella, using the clues that they have. So as you can see, one of our students has already started the scavenger hunt. We also have Barnes &amp; Nobles that has partnered with us. They have a display at Barnes &amp; Nobles to support this initiative. Last night, Ms. Griffin and one of our teachers did a read aloud event at the Nannuette Library. So there's a lot happening with this initiative. And in our classrooms, our students are reading, but they're also writing. So here's another opportunity for us to really enhance writing for our students. So this is the United by Reading Initiative, and we're really excited about, you know, just engaging our community.
So one of our next steps for Miller, our next steps include really continuing the professional discussions on how to elevate rigor using the I C L E framework. We've done faculty surveys to find out, you know, where we're going next, what the feedback on what we're doing is. And the next step will be to pick another part of that rubric and really dive into that. And that's going to be thoughtful work at Miller. You know, continuing analyzing data and improving student outcomes is always the bottom line while keeping our little ones happy and curious. And we are also, in addition to looking at the I C L E frameworks, there's, with Mark White, who is our coach, Diana Jones is a woman who's coming in to work on what's called P L C powered data teams. And we are right in the infancy of learning those procedures and processes. We've had our own, but this is elevating how we're looking at data, really to inform our instruction and taking a look at common formative assessments. So that will be an update for next year. Of course, we're going to continue nurturing and growing our students' curiosity, intellect, and character alongside our wonderful parents. And we have to be grateful for the hard work and dedication that the staff brings to the table every single day. And we could not do it without our team, Ginny and Mindy and Mirtal and everybody. It's really, it takes a village. And we're grateful, and thank you.
Well, I'd like to. Everybody's looking at me with a "why." Of course, Miller has such a big part of my heart, always has and continues to. This staff, I really believe, is like no other. And of course, I'll say that to the other schools. Don't worry about it, I see you looking at me. But dedication and love of, love of what they do and love of the kids from everybody, from, you know, the principal throughout the entire school is just so important. But so much of the work that you're doing, like I remember this hibernation unit from years ago and how you'd see the kids getting off the bus with their animals, that they were going to hibernate. And to see how it has evolved, something, some subtle things that you've done to make it so enriching is just amazing, really amazing. And the support people that you have, like Mindy, that, even that chart that you showed where you broke down what you did in Envisions and coupled it with the other things that they could use and, you know, had it right there, you know, may seem like not a big project, but I know how important something useful, something like that is. This united reading, wow. Like, I just, I just love it, just this whole experience about, I mean, kids need to know. I remember teaching and saying to the kids something about a post office. And when I first started teaching, everybody had gone to the post office with their parents. Everybody knew what a post office was. And by the end of my career, no one had gone to the post office. What was that? What's a post office? So getting these kids out through reading, using that as a lens, but just getting them out into their community to walk around and focus them in the everyday things that they may not have noticed is just such a learning experience. But, I mean, we love our little learners, and they inspire you, and you inspire us. So thank you for doing everything that you do. It's just, it's just amazing. I just love it. I took other notes, but it makes me verklempt, so. You're amazing, you really are amazing. Our kids are so lucky.
You're right. It's really funny, because, you know, most of our board meetings, we have a lot of business stuff to do. And I always look forward when we have a school who's presenting. So this was great. Not only what you told us, I'm hoping, by the way, you're going to have this so we can view it on, we'll be on the website, so those out there who want to see, because it was really hard to see some of those things, so it'd be great. I think what I really like about it is the fact that you're so integrated. You know, it's not just you're teaching math, you're teaching, you know, reading, you know. It's like everything is combined and it's part of the whole. And that's kind of exciting. I love the little ones. I mean, I loved it when we went and visited the pre-K not too long ago. And it was just, it was just really so nice to see all of these little kids so engaged in what they're doing. So thank you. I just love it when you guys come, and you're terrific. What a great, what a great school. I always loved, loved that place. Thank you.
The hibernation project was fun. So we, it was, it was, it was a lot of fun to do. I can tell you that 100% that we enjoyed it. It was a whole family affair, pitching table. I didn't, I didn't realize it, but the oral presentation, I love that, you know, getting up there, my little guy doing a presentation, that's, that's great. And screw, I know he's a little and shy side. And I was surprised that one graph, who, like, who does that include? Are all of those kids, every kid in every class, part of that triangle?
Yeah.
Yeah, like even the ENL kids, like every, all the kids? So that progress is not just like a certain subset of kids?
We call them our universal benchmarks. So they're universal because everybody gets them minimally three times a year.
Got it.
And anybody who falls into a support category, tier two or tier three, would get a version of progress monitoring to see how they're doing to get into the green.
And so it's like, are yellow kids ones that get like push-in, push-out, or are those red kids?
So it depends. It depends on the student, it depends on the model of service, it depends on, Mindy referenced this. It's, it's the benchmark, and then we dive into what each child needs. So they're grouped accordingly, and those groups can change depending on the progress in the specific unit, or, you know, there's five different areas of reading we address. So, you know, things can change depending on where the kids are at the moment. But we do have push-in, we have pull-out, we have, yeah, a wide variety of things.
And, yeah, the umbrella thing, the kids are like obsessed with this. They think everybody has umbrellas. I promised them I'll pick them up tomorrow and go looking for umbrellas. But the book was super cute, thanks to Roseanne. Roseanne doing that is great, I mean.
She has boxes and boxes and boxes of them.
Little things like that, I mean, you know, he got present, he was like so excited. Like, it's just little things that like make them, like you said, curious and happy fun. And we get to read a book, you know, it's like, it's perfect. But, yeah, that hibernation project, I'll tell you, was fun. I don't know about a bear underneath my porch, but. It was a snake, we did a snake. He wanted to do a snake. I know they're not real hibernation animals, but he wanted to do a snake, so. Not, it was like we were reading about it, but they're a little different. Because they'll come out and walk. It was, it was so much fun, though, my whole life.
Man, I was thinking about your comment about pre-K. We were in a pre-K room this week because the state education department had come to visit. And a little boy came up to me, and we were talking about something, buildings, you know, the car wash. And he came up to me and he said, you know where you should go? I said, where? He said, Target. He just said that. And I said, why? He said, because my mom buys everything at Target. Target has everything. And I was like, you are right, Target has everything. So I was laughing to myself, wondering if you were going to see a Target. They one-stop shopping. They didn't have Target when I was growing up, so it's just funny.
For those of us who have older kids and having experiences a long time, it's great to see just how it brings us back to how adorable they are. It really is, because I feel like I've forgotten, you know, when they get older. But really, really, yeah, so, so cute, and their answers are just so honest and real.
Yeah, they're all be honest things.
How that I C L E is making everyone evolve, not just the kids, but, you know.
The excitement in the, in the teachers, it's really, you know, it's focused and it's guided and it's, it just, the results it produces for students are, and so it's, that's what I love.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you.
So the most of the kids say raccoon in the attic?
No, nobody answered raccoon, nobody at all. The faculty didn't answer raccoon, because I did have had experiences with raccoons in their attic. It was always a bear. I'd read shots.
Because it's outside. It's anything inside there.
Come spring, you might not want a bear, but, yeah.
Marty, Marty was kind of cute.
Okay, thank you very much.
That was great.
Uh, next up is new business. And first up is the Bosie's Annual Meeting Notice, which is going to be Wednesday, April 12th, at 7:00 PM at Jesse Caffin School. And they'll have the annual election for Board of Education members. And the budget vote for the component boards will take place on Tuesday, April 18th. So almost a week after. And people up are going to be Debbie Gaddy, oh, the vacancies for Debbie Gaddy, Michael Mark, and Peggy Zupi.
There's only one that's open to the members of Orange, so anyone can run for that seat.
Michael Mark. Anything else to add to that?
No, that's it, just anyone's answer.
Okay, well, you're up now for Rockland County School Boards update.
I'm sure there'll be someone from Rockland County School Boards, then maybe. Well, we had, we actually just had a meeting last night. And we had a pretty in-depth presentation by a representative from Orange and Rockland on electric buses. So he was, I felt that he was really promoting, you know, electric buses and kind of giving us a little bit of backgrounds on how O N R would obviously try to phase in the laws that are coming down, because they want electric buses. I believe all your new vehicles, all the new ones that are purchased have to be by 2027, anything new right after 2027. And then they'd like everything to be 100% electrified by 2035, which is not really that far away. And so, you know, you made it seem like they would have the infrastructure and everything, but I'm not so sure. I think there's, there were definitely some questions there about if this is all feasible because it's really, that's pretty fast, and we're already in 2023. So, you know, a little promotional, I think, for O N R. But will, I don't know, does anyone else have any other feedback on, on that, on what their feelings were? Because it is, what I did get from the questions that were asked was, it's a very touchy subject, the electric buses, because, you know, things that are good for the environment, but is it feasible, is it possible, the expenses, you know, how much the buses are going to cost? It's just tremendous. There's not nearly enough money behind the buses, you know, like even a fleet like Clarkstown, enough like 100 buses in their fleet for them to replace all of those buses with electric buses is exorbitant, like all the money that the state would give, wouldn't even, they're giving to every district, wouldn't even cover Clarkstown. So just as an example, so.
Also, those buses weigh.
Also, those buses weigh more than a regular bus. We don't do, you know, can Clarkstown support the infrastructure, the roads and?
Everything, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, also there was. There were just so many about, like question. They said the lifespan of each bus is, they said, five years.
The batteries.
The batteries. The batteries. Yeah, the batteries.
The batteries cost like $100,000 or more.
So you're talking every five years? Right. And it's not like they're going to give us money every five years.
Right.
And then they were also talking about the safety aspect, right? Those batteries, when the fireman was talking about the batteries, even in electric cars and how.
Does it fight electric car fire?
Right, I know, maybe the firemen.
We heard one. Yeah, that he was saying that the phone.
Still barbing.
Yeah. That the phone didn't work and that they had dumped over a tank of water on it just to put it out. You know, that's scary. And then, you know, they also talked about, you know, the concept of, you know, so we're, we obviously contract our buses, so how would that work?
Well, there, I think there's a lot more questions than there are answers. It's basically, I felt like that's how we, you know, he did his presentation about what ONR would like to do to support the infrastructure and everything and the charging stations and all that. But I feel like there were a lot more questions than answers. But I guess it's good that we're having a conversation. I think it's important that we're having a conversation.
Well, I mean, the cost of a diesel bus right now is $150,000. The cost of an electric bus is $450,000 to $500,000. So we're not talking, we're talking about huge difference in the, in just the cost of buses. That's not counting the, every five years, the $100,000 having a new battery. So, yeah, we've been trying legislatively. We've talked to all our legislators to push the timeline back. So instead of having to start in '27 and then in '35, maybe we start in '35 and then push the end out farther. Because really, to be honest with you, they don't have the infrastructure right now to even be able to do that. We have tried ourselves, talking to our federal representatives to see whether or not there'd be money that. I offered Nannuette as a pilot program for our three buses that we have that are Nannuette buses. If they wanted to buy three new buses for us and set us up, we could be the pilot program. That didn't fly. But you gotta try, you gotta try.
Right, I think that's probably the best, yeah, way to go. The other few little things, just we met our new Area 10 director. She just started in January, her name's Cheryl Brady. So she just introduced herself. And just, I think I mentioned it last time, Monday, March 13th is our shared information session on cybersecurity, which should be, you know, really interesting. But that was, that was basically about it. Most of it was really about the electric buses, which, to be continued, I guess.
Christine, Nisba, Nisba?
Yeah, good news. Usually I'm talking, I'm usually complaining about them not giving us any money in Albany or in federal government. But I have good news. If you saw the governor's proposed budget, it was a $3.1 billion plan that would jump education aid 3.1 billion, but Nannuette's piece of this would be $5 million. So we're finally, after many years of fighting for it, we'll be fully funded in our foundation aid. It's taken probably 10 years of fighting to have that happen, but it's happened this year. So we're really very grateful for it. Next Friday, the 10th, the Nisba is going to have their lobby day virtual. So if anybody wants to sign up for it, just call Alexis and she will sign you up for that. Following the 15th, Tom DePrisco from Pearl River and myself are going to be representing Rockland County, obviously representing Nannuette. We're going to meet with each one of our legislators in the county, in Albany, in their Albany offices to reiterate the kinds of things that we really need. One thing that was not in the governor's budget and that we're very keenly want is the food program, the universal food program for all of the kids. So we're going to, we're going to push that. I think we have bipartisan on both sides of the aisle are for it. So that's a really good sign since they usually don't talk to each other. So, so that's a good thing. So maybe we will get that. When I go, I'll report back after I'm in Albany and let you know what they all said and where we're going. I'm sorry?
See what their feelings are on electric buses.
Well, we've already had that conversation with them, but we'll continue to it. The other thing I want to do about the national level, I don't know if anybody here is interested in going to a national conference, but if you are, it's April 1st, April 3rd. You've got to do it pretty soon if you're interested in going. Since I'm a past president of the National Association, I can get to go by the National Association. So I will be going to it. But if anybody else wants to join, just let, let us know.
In Orlando, right?
It's in Orlando. That's one good thing about being a past president, they pay for you.
You ready? Local government? Second public forum? Anybody like to speak? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for purposes of discussing the history of a particular person? Move by, no, but, uh, go move by Sue, second by Ann. What was he saying?